Yep, I'm ready.
All right, at this time, we'll call our council meeting in order for March 23rd, 2021. Jamie, if you could read our sunshine statement, please?
The advice that proper notice has been given by the township council in accordance with the sunshine law in the following manner. Notice advertised in the Burlington County Times and Camden Carrier Post on January 7th, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jenny?
Here.
Ms. Pareo?
Here.
Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Burrell?
Here. First up, we have our motions to approve minutes for the January 12th, 2021 work session, action and close session meeting. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion, Tom Lyon. Second, Lynn Jenny.
Jamie?
Mr. Smith? Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye, and the motion carries, so the minutes are approved. Next, we have our consent agenda. Before we read our consent agenda, does council have any objections to the consent agenda? Or want to take out any of the resolutions individually? Seeing no from everybody, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is Resolution 2021-55, all the way to Resolution 2021-61.
So move Virginia.
Second.
And you got that, Jamie?
I got Virginia and Marla, right?
Yep, great. And then Jamie, if you could please call the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye, and the motion carries, the resolutions are passed. And next, I need a motion authorizing the payments of bills, including all purchases made under the cooperative purchasing agreement.
So move, Tom Lyon. Second, Lynn?
Jamie?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
And the motion carries. Next, I need a motion granting mercantile license to House of Cars Wholesale and Auto Strata Motors. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion, Lynn?
Oh, second.
Marla, Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye, and the motion carries, those mercantile licenses are approved. And next, we're going to jump into our work session. Just for clarifications, the item which was originally marked, what was it? It was the home on... Yeah, Jeff has been moved to an executive session, so for those folks who are joining us online and council, just make sure you have the correct agenda as we move forward. Okay, so first up, we have three items, A, B, and C, all have to do with our continued effort here to clean up, modernize, and get rid of conflicting ordinances. You know, as we took over office, you know, with our reappointment here, I've been reading ordinances on my free time, because that's what I do now that I'm in law school, and as well as the mayor, you know, and with Sal, we've been reading these things, and we call each other and say, well, you know, this is crazy. It says the budget needs to be sent to council January 15th. I don't think that's ever happened in the history of Del Ran. There's just, you know, the couple areas, or maybe once, right, Jeff?
No, it used to happen very regularly until the state extends it every year.
Yeah, so that's among a bunch of things that we're trying to clean up, you know, and make sure our books, our ordinances are, you know, up to par. I view that, our ordinance as ordinances, as the foundation here in town. And if they're not up to par, or at least accurate, then I think, you know, we don't really have a good foundation to stand on. So among those, you know, the first item, we've, one of the first items we've noticed is the pay the play ordinance. Sal took a look at it, a look at us, look at it for us, and through his legal analysis, there's a memo attached. The law is effectively unenforceable, and I don't want to put words in Sal's mouth, but unenforceable because it just conflicts with itself in so many different portions. Not that it conflicts with the state law, but it conflicts within itself. Section C conflicts with section A. It's just, it's impossible to get a straight opinion on it. So with that in mind, I don't think we can have, you know, an ordinance on the book that conflicts with itself. So we're going to ask, you know, I'm asking council if we would consider repealing that effectively, you know, maybe next meeting, get rid of that. By doing that, we would, Sal, correct me if I'm wrong, the state ordinance would then kick in, and that would govern pay the play laws here in Del Ran.
Yeah, that was our recommendation, as you looked at our letter from March 5th, and we tried, we tried to be comprehensive and not be boring, but looking at the '05 initial enactment, the '08 amendments, and then going from there, trying to cut and paste and mismatch parts. And we did a comparative analysis with the neighboring municipality, which is Moorestown, and you can see some of the legal challenges that they went through. So I professionally believe my opinion is that it's unenforceable as written, and I think it's probably the best thing for us as a municipality to repeal this in its entirety so that the state statute would control. That's my recommendation.
Great. I think that makes sense. We can't have an ordinance on the book that's unenforceable and conflicting. I think there's no better ordinance to put in the place by default than the states, which is tested, well-written, well-drafted, litigated, you know, it's been through the wringer, and we know it worked, so let's not recreate the wheel. Council have any objections to us repealing this in an upcoming meeting?
Are there other townships using the state model?
The overwhelming majority of them.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, yeah, we're in the minority, having a local ordinance.
Yeah, trying to reinvent the wheel doesn't always work.
No, and there's a lot of things, and I know we'll talk about them as we go through, but there are other instances where we have ordinances that mirror the state statute, and there's no reason for that. I mean, that's why the state statute's there, so. And this was probably a good effort, but there was more than a decade. It was starting in 2005, trying to do it, and you know, you've got, you've got almost a decade and a half of trials, and it's just, I read it repeatedly, and I was confused.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. So I saw everybody shake their head, right? We're good to do this in the upcoming meeting?
Sounds good.
Great, awesome. Thank you, Sal, for that memo. And if you could flag an ordinance, or I guess it's a resolution, whatever it may be, to repeal that?
No, to be an ordinance, I guess we'll, we'll work with Jamie to come up with some language to put on the, it would have to be an ordinance repealing this ordinance. So there'd be an introduction, first, second reading to repeal this one.
Right, okay, awesome. And we're going to go right into our next ordinance, which is the snow removal ordinance, which Sal's office has prepared for us. My understanding is this is the identical, it's pretty much identical to Morris Towns, which all of us liked in early, in early discussions. So this is in front of us to take a look at. Does anyone have any thoughts, suggestions with this? What is everybody thinking? And I gotta find it.
Other, this, this one again was conflicting in a number of areas. I remember reading about parking your car on the odd side of the street until the even side was cleared. It just seemed antiquated.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's kind of the theme here. We've discovered, a lot of times, we look to do ordinance for answers and realize it's antiquated or conflicts with itself, and doesn't give us a clear answer. And then that's where we have to step in, so.
Tyler, if I could just jump in, so just a comment from my notes, the previous meeting, we had looked at it, and I think the consensus of council at that point in time, Moorestown seemed to be just much cleaner, much simpler. I believe that was Jeff's recommendation when we had the work session comments. And again, I wish I could claim pride of authorship here, but you know, we closely mirrored Moorestown. Jennifer's nodding her head, she did, she did the yeoman's work on this one. So again, why reinvent the wheel? We didn't have to, and it simplifies things.
Yep.
Excuse me, would it be of any value, when we're talking like item C, where you have it highlighted? Would it be of any value to indicate where people can go to find out which media outlet they should listen to? Or, you know, what the website is, that type of thing? I know the website changes maybe, or news media can change, but at least a source where they can go to find out who to dial into?
We can do that certainly, but then you run into the risk of that becoming an outdated or outmoded piece of media, which then would necessitate a change in the ordinance. So first, first and second reading to amend the ordinance. That's why we tried to be broad in terms of news media, because we have many sources. It could, it could be the township website, it could be a NICSOL, it could be a notification system. So to cover those bases, we can do that. We can list all the media, but then we may be amending this ordinance in three years if that particular media is no longer around. So, but we can do that, certainly.
Well, my only concern is, you know, how to be specific about it for our residents, because, you know, residents will say, well, yeah, you told me you're going to put it in the media and on the website, but I don't know where they are, that type of thing. That's maybe through the communications group again, when we communicate out to people, that might be something to highlight.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, I think, and you took the words out of my mouth, Lynn. I mean, the communications committee is working on defining the best ways to communicate, you know, especially with this. So is there, you know, my opinion is make this as broad as possible, use a lot of mays, and maybe add to the discretion of the mayor, you know, if there's things that come up, you know, we want to be able to have as broad authority as possible to get this message out, whatever means that may be. That's my thought. And I mean, Jeff, this is probably for the administration, the mayor or Jeff, would the emergency management coordinator be okay with this, this authority?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Awesome. Well, I think this is great. This is exactly what we need. We turned, I think it was four pages when we printed it out, right, Sal, into one, a little over one page of right to the point. It's effective, short, brevity goes a long way these days.
Now, this one will be a repeal and replace. So as we had discussed previously, we're going to repeal what's currently on the books, rather than trying to piecemeal it and clean it up. So repeal that in its entirety and replace with this one.
One last quick question. I know on the other, on the existing ordinance, it talks about roads that have snow, what, snow emergency signage or whatever? Are they the only roads that will be governed by this? Or will all the streets in Del Ran be governed by this?
Sal, I can jump in. I think, I think our understanding was it would be up to the, as I read it, up to the emergency management coordinator to make that determination, depending on the severity of the storm, right? I think the last ordinance, you were correct, it listed a handful of roads. But part of the problem with that is that effectively was triggered anytime it snowed, and there is just maybe certain situations where if we're only getting an inch of snow, maybe even less, right? It doesn't make sense for us to enforce moving cars off the street legally, because we have to send, as Jeff explained earlier, you know, it's quite a production to send out all the police and knock on people's doors. You know, it can be done, but we should just use it tastefully or artfully, I guess. You know, because there's just people who aren't going to move their cars. And I know in the past, we've had folks who've complained, Jeff has explained, you know, this, it's a hot button issue when you start ticketing people for not moving their cars. So I think, as we talked about it before, my understanding was this would only be triggered in large-scale emergencies. You know, big snowstorms, not your run-of-the-mill, you know, one-inch coating that happens overnight. Does anyone have any other thoughts? Questions? I think this is good. So Sal, if you just want to make those updates, as Lynn mentioned, you know, ways we can refine that section C there? And then maybe we can have a draft for first reading at the next meeting?
Do you want me to add in some language about the declared snow emergency routes? We can add that to paragraph A.
Yeah, I mean, what does everybody think about that? I mean, I'm going to kick it over to the, to the mayor and Jeff a little bit on this, just in terms of, you know, this is, to a certain extent, we're writing the law, but the administration's going to have to, you know, see this through. So, you know, what makes sense for you guys to effectively, you know, plow the streets? Mayor, I know you went out, you know, the last couple of snowstorms. So do you have any insight on this that you can provide?
No, I think that if we just, rather than making it too complicated, snow emergency routes, this and the other thing, if we just suggested everyone who can get their cars off the road, that makes such a huge difference. I mean, obviously, the main roads are critical, you know, depending on, you know, Fairbury Street, Haynesville Road, and the like, Conroe, Hartford. But if everyone, I think if we keep it uniform, then there's less, there's less likelihood of confusion. Jeff, you agree?
I agree.
Yeah, I think we just say, you know, these, these are the rules, that's what the video said. These are the rules, when it snows above two inches and, and, you know, we know that there's going to be an emergency declared or likely going to be declared, just, just park your car on your lawn or in your driveway and get it off the street. Makes an incredible difference. Plus, if you have four-wheel drive, it's fun to drive on your lawn, or at least that's what my daughter tells me.
Yeah, and that's actually a good point. I didn't see it, Sal. Is there anything in here about, you know, if you park on the, I think there's a law prohibiting parking on, on your, your grass. Is there something that waves that?
No, it doesn't. It's kind of left in the discretion of the, either the police officer or the code enforcement officer. But yes, there's, there is another section in the ordinance that prohibits parking regularly on your front lawn, obviously, or things like that, but you know, this is the declaration of a snow emergency, so it's rather limited and confined.
Okay.
Can, can that be added so that we can say and point, have something to point to that says, you know, you are allowed to park on your lawn for a snow emergency, you know, up to whatever, what is appropriate, 12 hours prior to the storm? And once your roads are cleared, then you, you have to put your car back, you know, as safely as possible back on the street. Is there a way to do that easily?
We could, but I'm hesitating because I think you want this to be more open and more fluid and have the discretion in the OEM coordinator. I mean, we could certainly do it, but I just, I can envision situations where it's on the side law, it's on the front lawn. I'm parking the curb. I mean, it could be, the enforcement could be somewhat of a nightmare.
Okay, is there anything that, that wouldn't be needed to give the OEM the authority to say that you can park on your lawn?
I think, I think Sal's interpretation of it is that if, if you're not regularly parking on your lawn, there's no problem. So parking for a snowstorm is not regularly, it would not trigger that, right? Sal's, my understanding?
The focus of this is less parking on the lawns, and it's not parking on the streets so that you can clear the streets.
Yep.
So that's why I'm hesitating to include parking on the lawn here, because once the streets are cleared, we want the cars back on cleared streets. We don't want them parking on the lawn.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
You know, I understand your point, Tyler's point regarding keeping it kind of open. And so I would retract any recommendations to add to item C. I would just leave it the way it is and communicate the best we can.
Okay, but we'll still, we'll still add a reference to the snow emergency routes in paragraph A.
No, I think we would, I think Lynn just retracted that.
Okay, so, okay, that's fine.
There's a line in here that the streets identified in the emergency proclamation, so. And I think flexibility really is the key here, right? You know, these guys are professionals, they work with the administration, the police, the fire, and EMS. Either they can make a determination based on what's, you know, what's reported. So this is good. My only other question was for violations and penalties, the police would be the ones who issued this $50 fine, or is this the code?
It's a summons, and they go to municipal court.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I know there's sometime we get people call, and the police go out and say, well, this is a code enforcement issue. You need the code enforcement to come out.
They can write this ticket. The police can write this ticket.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, we all good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, so we'll get that on, on, on the books next meeting. We'll have a first reading. Is that okay, Jamie? Okay, great. Thank you, Sal, and Jennifer, and Moorestown for their lovely donation to our ordinance. That's awesome. Great. And next up in our ordinance world, we have some updates along some other ordinances. Sal's provided a memo this afternoon, you know, outlining some of these. So Sal, if you can just give us the quick elevator pitch with this, just to keep us updated, and it sounds like you're going to ask for some authority to take a look at, at these and refine them, like we just did with pay the play and the snow ordinance.
Correct, yeah. This is the continuing, this is not going to be the, the only time we're going to be having this conversation, and you're going to hear us saying it over and over again. So I apologize for getting the memo out late this afternoon. Jim, we should have gotten to you earlier to include it, but we did email it to everyone, so you should have a copy of it. Just take a look at that, read through it, and those are some of the ordinances that we noted were inconsistencies. Again, peddlers, hawkers, I mean, you know, we're referring yard sales. I mean, you know, contemplating things like that that don't really reflect accurately our world. Taxi cabs, I mean, the only municipalities that I know where a taxi cab ordinance really has some viability and stick-to-it-iveness is either Lindelwold, which is at the end of the train station, or somewhere that's kind of an active train station where there's cab stands. I mean, there's not really a spot in Del Ran where you've got a mass transportation hub where taxi cabs are going to be gathering. So, you know, things along that nature. So take a look at those, if anybody has any questions. But what I'd like to do is start introducing those as we go through, so we can clean these things up.
That's great. Thanks, Sal. I appreciate that. And just in, in our discussions this morning with Sal, I gave him a call. You know, in my reading the ordinance, I found a couple other issues. There's, the ordinance says we should have one police captain, you know. Gary informed me that we no longer have a captain. I don't even think we collectively bargained for one anymore, right, Jeff? I think that's...
We do not have a police captain.
Yeah, so, you know, probably clean that up. There's some, some things about the budget being proposed to council in January, which does not happen. There's also a marine advisory board, not really sure what that does. And there's a development committee as well. There's a couple of different things that are on the book. So just some more to add to our list, and Sal, we can talk offline and get it on your radar, and we'll, we'll keep bringing it to council. So I appreciate council entertaining this, and you continue to entertain it for a couple more months, I'm sure. But I think, you know, we're doing the right thing in the long term. Any questions with that memo?
Just one item with respect to the budget. The budget information is statutorily what's required of the Faulkner Act with the state. And Sal brought it out. I mean, if you don't want to put things in there that are statutory, you don't need to. But all of those are still the deadlines that are in place by statute. But every year, for probably the last 10 at least, the state has come down and extended the deadline. So it's up to you guys whether you want to, you know, obviously, change it, but they're statutorily, and come with the Faulkner Act, former government that we have here.
Gotcha, okay. Good to know. We'll, we'll take that into account, for sure. So as we move on from our ordinance trifecta, next up, we have cleanup day. So Jeff, if you could just give us a quick update on this, this is always a good program for the residents.
Okay, annually, other than last year because of COVID, we've run a cleanup day. It's been called dumpster drop-off day, dunk the junk. It's had a bunch of different names, but essentially, we have run it, number one, it's paid for with clean community funds. This year, we're proposing that it takes place on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, April 15th through the 17th. Thursday and Friday will be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the public works yard, and Saturday would be 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The Del Ran residents, you do have to show ID, can come and basically do cleanups of items that normally, perhaps they don't want to put out in their trash. This would include asphalt, concrete, bricks, wood, stumps, metals, electronics, and other items along those lines. Public Works employees will be out there to check on the residency issue and to direct the residents as to where to drop it off. These, we have the various dumpsters that we order, and a lot of these items end up getting recycled. Most of them end up going into different recycling dumpsters. And like I said, it's paid for with the clean communities funds, and it's usually been a very popular weekend. People come, basically, there's traffic continuously the entire time that that goes on. So that's what we're proposing in terms of a date and time.
That's great. I've, I think, Jeff, you hit the nail on the head. I went there last, two years ago, and it was just a constant flow the whole day, just the whole day. So it's definitely something the residents look forward to. And I think if we can get the word out as soon as possible, you know, give people kind of a plan, and then they can hopefully do their spring cleaning, you know, and benefit from, from, from this weekend. Council have any objections or questions with that? Okay, we're going to move right on. You're good to go. Jeff, do you need anything from us officially, or, okay, great. And next up is going to be Jim with our Route 130 sewer issue. Unfortunately, it doesn't look like great news, so hopefully you can figure out a good way with this. This is, this doesn't look pretty, Jim.
Yeah, so, I mean, you guys authorized last year, you know, a video inspection of the sewer main that exists along Route 130. It extends kind of just by Home Depot, runs all the way down the shoulder with 30, like underneath, right underneath the sidewalk, pretty much, and then connects to the interceptor that runs the stream bed of the Swede Run. So pretty much from Home Depot to McDonald's. It's just under a mile long. It's a pretty vital main. You know, it takes in the discharge from the Clay Street Pump Station, the Bridge Road Pump Station, as well as all the direct connections. The Hartford Road Pump Station also discharges to it. So a lot of times when pump stations discharge, their effluent has a lot of chemicals in it that sometimes eats away at the pipes. And this is an old asbestos spent pipe that has been affected by what we think from that. There has been some sinkholes that developed over the last couple of years, especially in front of Barlow's. There's one right now that we're trying to repair, we're talking one, two. But yeah, so based on the video inspection, the good news is that we can, looks like we can line it in place. It's where they, they, they blow up this like membrane inside the pipe, and then that cures in place to, that creates a new like structural pipe inside of a pipe. Where the pipe's located, it's, you know, it's right underneath the sidewalk, but also there's a pretty significant utility pole system, like right on top of the pipe, if not like a foot offset. So digging up the pipe and replacing it in place, not only dealing with Route 130 issues, dealing with utilities will be a major issue. And we would, we would have to explore, you know, PSC and G, and having to negotiate with them the situation if we haven't dealt with the poles. But if, since we can slip-line it, or cure and place line it, and that, that would be option regardless. So the cost assessment's in that report, about four and a half million with, you know, all soft costs. It's pretty likely not, pretty big number, yes. There's a lot of flexibility with that number, there's a lot of contingencies added in. There's a lot of unknown at this point. So, you know, I guess you just have to decide, you know, it does need to get done. We can do it in phases. It's, I guess, something we got to discuss. But with the issue that Barlow right now, there are a few sinkholes that developed. We did some test pits, verified as a sinkhole coming from the sewer main. We have, we have a couple quotes from two contractors, one Mac Rose, who's an emergency contractor, and the other contractor that did the video inspection, they also provide, they also do the curing-in-place lining project. So we did get two quotes from them that come out there, and it's line like a 200-foot segment now for emergency purposes. We're vetting the quotes, it just came in today. One was about $40,000, one was about $80,000. Right now, they're like apples and oranges, we're looking at and making sure that the full scope of work needed to make this immediate repair is covered, and they're both, you know, quoting the same things. So we should have an answer on that tomorrow. I can communicate that to you, Jeff, and whoever else from the council, or you, Gary, let, let us know, like, what our recommendation is to at least get to some immediate repair, and then, you know, figure out how you want to budget the rest of the job to get that, you know, moving along.
All right, great, thanks, Jim. I was pretty alarmed in the last page. I think a majority of them are ranked condition five or four, which means they're likely to fail within five years, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you're already seeing it, like, the section, the upstream section... Yeah, yeah. I mean, you're already seeing it like the section, the upstream sections are worse because that's where it takes the direct discharge from the pump station. So you can kind of see that from like, you know, Barlow, pretty much, you know, that's that's the upstream section. So that's where it starts to be the worst. It gets a little better as you go down because the. The chemicals and the gases dissipate as it moves along the line through the manholes and stuff. But yeah, it's a pretty old line, asbestos cement. And the last time they dug it up. A segment, I mean, it completely fell apart once they got down to it. So. We're really concerned about having to dig it up here. That's what we wanted. This repair temporarily now would be lining one segment from animal to mammal, pretty much in front of Barlow's. And then, you know, restoring wherever there was a single.
Okay. Well, I mean, as much as no one likes the to spend $4 million on something you especially can't see. But, you know, it's one of those things that come to our desk here that we don't have much of a decision on, at least in my opinion. Not much we can do. We got to provide sewer services. Does anyone have any thoughts or questions on this? We want to get addressed?
That that needs to get done ASAP, especially in front of Barlow. And the whole thing's going to have to be done because duct tape and band-aiding it is not the answer. It's just going to lead to further costs down the road. So I think this is really important. We we take this one, we got to do what we got to do, figure out a way how we're going to do it in the best way possible. And, you know, I think we're on the right path with taking care of Barlow out front. There's a long time business in town. It's a good corporate partnership with us. So we got to make make those repairs and then get the whole damn thing done.
Agreed. Agreed. And go ahead, Lynn.
I'm just curious, how much longer will extend the life of the sewer, the existing sewer?
Oh, you know, that's a good question. I do not know that off the top of my head. I can find out. I am not the direct sewer engineer. We have another group that does that. But I know this is a very common practice that they've invented over the last like five, 10 years. And it does extend the life of the pipe, you know, and definitely adds if it were a new pipe. But I will, I will get you a specific detail, specific information on that.
Thank you.
That'll be great. And Jeff, I think you're probably going to mention it later on, I think in the budget portion. But I think you proposed, or at least, you know, we we chat about potentially doing this in phases and doing $2 million and then bond this year. And then 2 million next year prioritizing the portion in worst condition.
Yes, in talking with Jim, we thought it made sense maybe to do this in two phases. First of all, we had provided a million dollars in last year's budget that if you recall, at the end of the year, we moved over and reserved for this year. Because we weren't able to to complete the work that Jim's proposing. And the the section that is failing now is in worse shape. But, you know, we want to touch base with the engineer, get a little bit more information to see if that makes sense from a standpoint of mobilizing twice. But my understanding is the condition of that pipe is worse. And if we get in there and we start repairing it, we might also get a better estimate of exactly how much it's going to cost. Because right now, my understanding is the number is pretty raw. So we'll come back with some recommendations in terms of how to finance as well. Like I said, we had a million in cash for the project, but obviously it's going to take a little, another, at least another million just to do even half. So we'll be back with, back to you with some suggestions.
Okay, great. Jeff, does it make sense to put put this in the capital budget for this year? As a spinoff?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thanks. I just wanted to touch base with Jim, always the pragmatist. So then the next time council meets is about two weeks, well, it's two weeks from tonight. Do you think that they'll, you'll be, they'll be able to act on that? Well, you have enough information to be able to give them a recommendation that they can. Discuss and enact in two weeks?
Are you, you're speaking of this, this immediate repair we need to make?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to have an answer this week. So I don't know. I defer to, you know, you, Jeff and the council and you like. Does it have to come back to council for an emergency authorization, whatever you prefer? But yeah, we will, we're working to have an answer like this week from you and recommendation this week.
It's Sal, Jeff.
Well. I didn't anticipate that the that we were going to have an emergency repair or that it was going to be $80,000. $40,000, we probably could handle in the current budget. We may need to increase the sewer budget a little bit to handle the 80,000. Just on an operational standpoint, but that shouldn't be a problem. Your budget, we're not looking at any kind of rate increases. Things look pretty good in terms of the the fund balance and sewer. So if you want that to take place, we can make that adjustment tonight.
All right, yeah, well, I I think, yeah, so we got to make that adjustment. And as Tom put, I think we want to get this moving quick. We don't want to patch this for, you know, eight months and then, you know, come in and spend another $4 million. So, you know, the sooner we can get this big project done, I think the better. But ultimately, the question Sal is, is can we, so we're going to put this money in the budget. Does does Jim have to come back to us in two weeks to authorize the the project? Because we're not sure how much it's going to cost?
Yeah, yeah, there's two, two different things going on right now. One is the big overall project. The second is just like this immediate repair.
I'm just talking about the emergency repair.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, your definition of emergency, if God forbid, a pipe burst tonight after the meeting's over and it's raw sewage spilling all over Route 130. That's going to get fixed and we don't have to have a council meeting before then. But it'll, it'll be done after the fact, but it it sounds like this, it it should be on the agenda for two weeks from now to authorize that. I mean, you're talking about spending $80,000, so.
All right. So Jim, you can provide us updated numbers. You're comparing the two bids and then Jamie will work on getting that on the the next agenda to approve. This this repair and then we're going to budget for in our capital plan to do a phase of this around $2 million. To get the worst conditioned part of that pipe fixed in our capital plan. You can do that.
That sounds about right. So we're waiting to be, so if the number comes in tomorrow and it say we get it, we work it out, it's like $70,000 or $60,000 or $65,000 or whatever. Are we waiting two weeks to authorize to come back here to get approval from the council to authorize for contractor? Or we're letting you know what happened after the fact? That's why I just want, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify.
You're waiting to come back in two weeks?
Okay.
Jim, Jim, are, is if the contractor is is the contractor that we already have out of underbid. That we've bid out, we wouldn't have to come back, but we have two different contractors.
Yeah, two different contractors. You're actually under contract with both of them because one of them is actually under contract. We did the video inspection. And the other one is Mac Rose, who's been.
We already have a contract with, so we really wouldn't have to come back technically. But it's up to you guys.
I'll defer to Sal, whatever.
If they're already under contract, I wasn't aware that they're under contract. If you got two contractors under contract, then go ahead.
Yeah, it's more of just like the budget issue. It's, there might be a change order based on what they're capped at with their budget. But I will tell you right now, I mean, there's a driveway closed down and there's holes in the ground that are, you know, everything's being protected right now. So if we could, you know, I obviously don't want to give somebody notice proceed without everybody being comfortable with it. But it is kind of urgent to get it done.
Well, if it's timely, then I I think we should get it done. As long as Sal says we're okay, you guys have it under contract, then get it done tomorrow for all, you know, the sooner the better. I I think.
Get it done.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
But obviously you, there'll be communication over the next few days. Everybody will know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That'll be great. These are one of those decisions and here at council that we really don't have much of an option, you know. So it's a very easy yes, we got to get it done. Let's let's get it done. All right.
All right, thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate your hard work with this. And hopefully those, as as we dig this up, you know, maybe that $4 million, you know, whittles down to three or two, you know, cross your fingers. All right. So next up, it's going to roll right in, perfect segue to our budget discussion. So Jeff sent us a quick memo on a couple of things that have potentially changed. Jeff, do you mind just recapping this for everybody real quick?
Sure. I sent you out new sheets. The new sheet should have the changes that you had recommended. The public relations going from 16,000 to 36. I believe it was Councilman Smith had indicated questioned the assessor's miscellaneous. And it was handwritten by the assessor with a line through it and I had misunderstood. It is 1,000, not 7,000. So good pickup. So it's 1,000. And that change has been made. In addition, the Del Ran Emergency Squad had originally advised me before the year started. That they thought they'd only have $10,000 for low sap. They had $15,000 in low sap. So I've amended the low sap to $16,000. That was a voter referendum program. That was approved by the voters a number of years ago to provide for that program for volunteers. And then finally, the construction code official had sent in a new budget just the other day. Based upon the speed of some of the developments that have come in, but most importantly, Amazon. And the impact that's going to have on his part-time staff and has requested some additional hours for the the part-time staff. That would increase. That salary and wage budget by 22,299, if you see fit to do it.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sorry, are you done?
Yes.
I'm going to interrupt. Okay, great. You know, with the construction code, is that something that we would kind of, it would wash out? Because we'll be getting more fees from these increased homes and Amazon that it really wouldn't impact the bottom line?
It should. With the number of new developments that have come in and with Amazon. That should get back in the black this year. It was not in the black last year because of COVID. Nonessential work was held up for approximately five months and construction slowed down, but it's going great guns right now. So yes, that should offset that. That revenue should end up offsetting the expenses.
Okay.
And by the way, with any and all of these changes that are on here, you're still looking at a zero tax increase.
That's great. Council have any questions, thoughts?
I'd be fantastic if we can do these things without raising taxes. I think that's prudent and appreciate everybody's hard work on the budget. Great job.
Agreed. Agreed. Thank you, Jeff and the mayor for your hard work and all the department heads. I know this is not an easy, easy feat by any means, so. We really do appreciate it.
And I submitted some capital budget information. You can see it's pretty general. Again, because it's a plan, it's not an authorization to spend. And what I can do is make that adjustment on the sewer end for the project that we're talking about now. For that overall project and put that in as well.
Okay, Jeff, the the only thing outstanding question I had for capital, well, two, now that I'm thinking about it. One, is the police okay with phasing in the laptops?
I actually have right now, I have the number for the full amount. If you want to go that way in the capital. And again, it's not an authorization to spend, but it's basically $46,000 if you want to authorize all of them at one time. And they don't have a problem with doing all of them at once. Basically, they were doing that based upon a recommendation that council had made a number of years ago to face things over years.
Yeah, I'm I'm inclined to just do it all at once because dividing that much over three years, phasing doesn't mean anything to the residents. Over 35 years of a bond or whatever it may be. Council have any thoughts on that? Any?
I agree. Technology changes so quickly. By the time one computer's turned in, others are obsolete.
Yeah.
That's, and Council President, that's exactly right. Councilman Jenny's point is that we all know how much easier it is. If all the computers are in sync and the same model, the same year, the same software update. It makes it much easier to maintain something that, you know, I've seen many, many times.
Yep, I agree. So I think we'll, Jeff, you can keep that at that number. For all of them. Then the other thing is in an RAC meeting, Joe Parento, the chair chairman referenced. That a resident wanted to donate some money to help resurface the basketball court near DIS. Did he have any reach out to you about that? I know in the capital plan, we are looking at some of the basketball courts. He he mentioned it to me. I I told him to touch base with the administration. Does this plan take into account that?
Right now, it just has a general number for municipal park improvements. But again, not an author authorization to spend. So it would give you the flexibility. You guys will make that decision after we adopt the budget and then make decisions on what we want to go out and actually do an ordinance on. So it would allow for that. I haven't had that discussion yet with Joe, but I'll make sure I do.
That'd be great. And I did see that here. So the flexibility is a good thing, allows us to adjust as we see fit. That's great. I'm I'm good with with where we're at. I feel very comfortable with the budget. I mean, you know, we're increasing services, increasing. Increasing services here in town while keeping taxes stable. I don't think you can, you can deliver anything better than that. While we're getting wrecked with a $4 million emergency. All in the light of COVID as we're still going on. So I think we were, we're, you can't get much better than this, in my opinion. So I, like, like you said earlier, thanks, Mayor, for all your hard work with your first budget. Congratulations. And and Jeff, for all your hard work behind the scenes, putting this together for us.
This will be the third year in a row the tax rates remain stable. And over the last 10, it's only increased four cents.
That's, that's awesome.
So I would, I have to add, thank you to Jeff. Jeff is a whiz with figuring out how everything balances out. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you.
Testament to that healthy surplus and and keeping it that way. That's, that's so key. And I know sometimes people don't see it that way, but when this stuff comes up, we can absorb it and still not raise taxes. So it's a, it's, it's a good thing.
Yep, yep, absolutely. And then, actually, there's one thing we did miss at the end. So we prematurely ended that that discussion early. Jim, I'm going to rely on you for this. I I know we are doing a road improvement project this year. I use air quotes because it's it's in conjunction with PSC and G and American Water. They're doing most of the repairs on the road. We're going to do the concrete work. So in effect, the aggregate is a brand new road as if we did it. You know, we discussed earlier on potentially leaving the question open of do we do some roads ourself in in addition, right? To keep our aggressive infrastructure plan in place. I, you know, I wasn't too inclined to do that considering this emergency repair we got to do for $4 million. But Jim, you know, I did have a discussion with Jim and he said there's some potential for some cost savings with Notre Dame, right, Jim? I'm going to rely on you to explain this if I misunderstood. But the American Water Company wants wants to dig up some pipes there. So it may be beneficial for us to throw this into this year's capital budget?
Yes, New Jersey American Water advised me recently that they were thinking of adding Notre Dame Drive into their list of roads. Where they're going to be replacing their water main. So it'd be Notre Dame Drive and Notre Dame Court. And with that, they would, you know, pave half the road that, you know, it's been their policy that we we require. But with that, if we were, we were going to repay the road, then they would be. Yeah, they basically said they'd be paying us for their portion of the work that that it would cost. So we'd be basically getting like a half of the road. We could get the whole road paved at half the cost plus a little bit more. Because we do a little bit more than what they would normally do. So that's what we gave across this network.
Right. So I guess, Jeff, the question is, I think it's a no brainer if we can get the cost savings and throw it into this year. The question is, can our debt service handle that additional road at this time?
Yes, the capital budget actually provides for the flexibility to do that. And yeah, I believe that the debt service would allow for that.
Okay. Council have any thoughts, thoughts on this addition of Notre Dame to the capital budget?
Yep, sounds like a no brainer.
If American Water went in there, it's right to pull it up. Absolutely. Pull it forward.
Yep. All right, great. Sorry, I forgot about that at the end. It's it slipped behind some of these papers. So Jim, if you can work with Jeff to to figure out how to make that happen and put that on the timetable. It won't be as aggressive as we normally do, but, you know, there's, there's an extreme cost benefit to this and we don't want, you know. That that door to close on us.
Yes, and I will reach out to New Jersey American Water as well, just to reaffirm, you know, their plan and let them know what we're going to do and get that something in writing. At least we have some sort of like memorandum of understanding that this is what they're having. you know, their plan and let them know what we're going to do and get that something in writing. At least we have some sort of like memorandum of understanding that this is what's going to happen.
Okay, that sounds great. Awesome. So that officially concludes the budget discussion. So once again, thank you very much. With that closed, we're going to head into our reports. So first up, we have our clerk, Jamie Aggers.
I have no report tonight.
Thank you, Jamie. And next up, we have our administrator, Jeff Hatcher.
I apologize because I just put a lozenger in my mouth. Just one item, Public Works will begin leaf and branch pickup for the spring on April first. Leaf pickup is from April first to May first. Branch pickup runs from April first to October first. So especially for leaves, residents could get their leaves out. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that. And just as I always say, hopefully we can get that on the website and social media. And as the communications committee does their work, hopefully there'll be some other means to get that out. So thank you, Jeff. Next up, we have Mayor Gary Catterbone, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. So there's there are a number of things I'm going to try to dance around all the issues and not steal anybody's thunder because frankly, counsel and and I have been around and about with a number of things. But first, I want to advise everybody of a bunny alert. The Easter Bunny will be visiting Delran Residence Saturday, April third, starting at nine thirty in the morning. As as we've seen in the past, the Easter Bunny comes and kind of rides around the entire town with the help of the firefighters who are always happy to be the Uber drivers for the Easter Bunny. So be sure and listen for the sirens and have the kids come out and wave to the Easter Bunny. The other thing in some of our our recent meetings with some folks, the Delran Police Department, in one of the conversations, I said, you know, like, what's what's something that's really important that we should tell folks? And they said, frankly, lock your car. So many folks are not doing that. And we have a great neighborhood and a great town. But they're leaving their windows down. They're leaving valuables visible. And they they truly need to just lock your car every time. It's not that hard with fobs. It's it's a piece of cake. But don't leave loose change visible, cell phones. People leave their laptops out, jewelry, sunglasses, purses. And and they don't close their windows. They leave the, you know, vents or or sunroofs open. They really need to do that. If you have an alarm, make sure to check, make sure you didn't leave your garage door open. Some people have that happen. But also, also, you know, don't leave the garage door opener in the vehicle. If you can lock it in your trunk or certainly keep it out of sight. Just lock them and and obviously never leave vehicles unlocked or idling and unattended. It just it just invites trouble. The people, they said, most of the break-ins were not smashed windows, but just opportunists taking advantage of the situation. Second thing is, we'll be talking about this more and more as we go with our Anything with a Plug program. Something that will, as we've said before, keep folks out of, keep the trash out of the of the dump. And, you know, that costs us money. Whatever we get rid of through the trash trucks costs us money. All these things can be recycled somewhat. Don't put it in your recycling. Bring it to the township, call the Public Works Department to find out exactly how to do that. And I'm talking about, when I say Anything with the Plug, televisions, working or not working, small appliances, coffee makers, lamps, toaster ovens, even microwaves can be brought to the public works yard. Don't put them in the dumpsters that are for cardboard or plastic. But call first, let them know you're coming. Make sure you know what hours they're open. And and do that. If you if you do that, it will help the township save money in not bringing those items to the landfill. You'd also want to, if you'd like, you can go to the Delran Township.org forward slash public dash works, or just look in the departments for public works to get more information and the the drop off hours. I'm going to leave some of these to the other folks, but I just want to say what a great time I've had this week and that we spent some time with all the first responders on Saturday in the polar bear plunge. And last night, myself and a couple of the council folks enjoyed watching the firefighters train at the county facility and what they call a live burn. Genuinely enjoyed that and and realized just how hard their work is and how coordinated their efforts are. And finally, sadly, our deepest condolences to the Ashton family. One of our residents was tragically killed in a motor vehicle accident early Thursday morning. And I just ask all of the Delran folks, all of our big, big Delran family, to please keep them in their prayers. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it. Next up, we have our report from our solicitor, Sal Sisliano.
Nothing, nothing for public.
Thank you, Sal. Next up, we have from our engineer's office, CM and associates, Jim Winkowski.
Hi, hey, doing? Just real quick, I just, we're ready to bid Conroe as soon as DOT gives us the approval, all the pick works with them right now. We're expecting that within the next week. And the contract for Burlington County already appears and should be starting on the trail within the next few weeks with, you know, tree clearing, setting up their home base over in Amoco Island parking lot and start cutting in the trail on the River Drive. So that's all.
Great. Thank you very much, Jim, for keeping those projects on schedule and getting them done fast and efficiently. Next up, we have reports from council. So first up is Councilwoman Virginia Parejo, Virginia.
Yeah, a couple of things. First, many people in our area have incurred thousands of dollars of debt to their landlords during the pandemic. In response to the financial struggles affecting renters as well as landlords in our area, Burlington County, in partnership with the state of New Jersey, has started phase two of the COVID nineteen rental assistance program in hopes of keeping people in their homes and preventing utility shut offs. This program will provide coverage for bad rent that may be owed as well as temporary rental assistance to low and moderate income households that have had a substantial reduction in income, have qualified for unemployment benefits or experienced a financial hardship due directly or indirectly to COVID nineteen pandemic. I would like to encourage anyone who needs assistance to visit newjersey dot love slash DCA or call six zero nine four nine zero four five five zero as soon as possible. Second, I have been hearing from several residents that have questions about access to vaccine. Overwhelmingly, one major issue that seems to keep coming up is that older residents who qualify for the vaccine are struggling with making their appointment. More concerning, do not have transportation to get to their vaccine appointment. Accessibility should not prevent anybody from getting vaccinated. There are resources available for transportation as well. If any of my fellow Ward one residents need help understanding how to schedule vaccine appointment or securing a ride to their appointment, please reach out directly to me. My contact information is listed on the township website, and I will be happy to help get you connected with the resources the county has. All I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Appreciate it. And next up, we have Councilman Smith, Councilman.
Yes, thank you very much. Just a few things. First and foremost, over the weekend, there was the very exciting polar bear plunge that took place. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go, but I had did have a good reason why I wasn't able to go. I had my very first COVID nineteen vaccine appointment that morning. My daughter had one about an hour later, so we rode down to the site there in Gloucester, right there at the Emrahlin University and quick, it was painless. I recommend anyone, you know, that is a little hesitant, you know, it's honestly, it's really not a big deal at all. I've gotten plenty of vaccines over the years, and this one's probably the one that had the least amount of pain afterwards. So I definitely recommend it to anyone who's thinking about getting it. Secondly, you know, as Mayor Catterbone mentioned, last night, had the pleasure of joining the Delran Fire Department with their live burn training. So it was interesting to see all the firefighters out there practicing their craft. You know, it's pretty, it's, you know, it's an amazing job that they do. Got a chance to see them, you know, attack a fire, you know, going up steps and going down the steps. And it's just pretty interesting how you know, there's truly a science to what they do. You know, they just don't burst in the front door and just throw a bunch of water everywhere. So I learned a lot. So I'm definitely glad to have the opportunity there. And lastly, just wanted to mention that as of April first, I'm going to be attending a meeting with Congressman Andy Kim and Assemblyman Dr. Herb Conaway. They'll be meeting with African American church leaders in Burlington County to discuss vaccine distribution efforts and answer any questions that, you know, folks might have about safety or any concerns. So to echo Congress, I'm sorry, the Councilwoman's Parejo's comments, you know, transportation is a major issue and a major barrier for some for accessing the vaccine. But, you know, any folks that have those issues, you know, I'm helpful to, I'm I'm definitely looking forward to being able to bring back some good information to let the residents of Delran know exactly how they can get set up for scheduling vaccine appointments. If they have issues as far as transportation, getting to a vaccination site. So my information also is on the website. So folks, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me anytime, and I'll be happy to help. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. And next up, we have Councilman Lynn Jenny, Councilman.
I echo a lot of the same, you know, comments that were made. And just a reminder to everyone, we, you know, New Jersey is one of the worst performers right now with the virus. We need to stay vigilant as well as getting our vaccinations. We still remain vigilant with our masks, hand washing, distancing. Things we're tired of hearing, but if we if we can just bear a little longer, I think we're going to be better in the long run. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. And next up, we have our vice president of council, Councilman Tom Lyon.
Yeah, I'd also like to echo the sentiments with the Special Olympics, the polar bear plunge. I had the opportunity to do that actually down in Wildwood for almost ten years. And I met some of the Delran police officers down there, even before I was involved with the town. They're a great group. And it was really nice to be with all the police, fire, rescue, EMTs. And there were so many young folks there, and we had a really nice time. It was nice to hang out and chat and whatnot. So that that was really cool. Also, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Jim, our engineer. We went out because we're getting ready for that Creek Road project where we're going to run some sewer. That's going to help out, you know, that county facility and the residents along there. And it's nice because we all care about the residents and the infrastructure and everything. And it probably would have been really easy for Jim just to say, all right, we're going to put it here, there, whatever. But we met with a resident, and there's three properties, and we worked with him on where the best location would be for the tie ins. And he showed a lot of caring for our residents. So I I'd like to thank Jim. He does a great job, and he was great out there at the Anderson Farm. So I appreciate it. That's it.
Thank you very much, Rob.
Thank you. For my report, I'll keep it very brief. I echo my members, my colleagues here on council and their sentiments. I want to, just as a quick update, the Tree Committee and the Communications Committee are meeting, the Tree Ordinance Committee, I should say, are meeting Thursday and tomorrow, the Communications Committee is meeting. Hopefully, we, both of those committees can have recommendations to council, if not at the next meeting or the meeting afterwards. So some, you know, so we're moving right along, creating work for ourselves here at council, but it's all good work, things that, you know, we have to get addressed. So looking forward to that. And I also want to thank the Police Department and special shout out to Lieutenant Mitchell for putting, you know, planning, spearheading the the polar bear plunge with the Police Department for for such a great cause. You know, we really do have some of the best law enforcement and first responders, I I think, around who are really dedicated not only to their craft, but to the community and helping the greater good. And I think, you know, we all should be, you know, honored to have them here in our town. It was a great, great time, great, great cause. And as is what's becoming a tradition, anytime I'm invited, I end up getting soaking wet. So I appreciate that. And hopefully, well, I look forward to whatever the next adventure may be with them. Maybe I'm glad I didn't go to the fire thing last night. I may end up in the fire. But it's it's all good. It's all fun. And we're just glad that we have that line of communication between the mayor, council here and administration with with our men and women of law enforcement and first responders. I think it's a great thing that we all work together. So with that being said, that'll conclude our reports for this evening. And at this time, I'll ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment.
So move, Tom Lyon.
And a second, please.
Second, Virginia.
Virginia, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing none, the the a's have it, and the motion carries. Our floor is now open to public comment. For the two people who are joining us tonight, if you could please raise your hand. That's in the bottom of your Zoom application. There's a little icon. Raise your hand. If you could raise your hand and our clerk, Jamie Aggers will unmute you and you can participate in our meeting. Seeing no virtual hands raised, I'll ask for a motion to close the public comment.
I'll make a motion to close so public comment.
Thanks, Councilman. And a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So opposed. All right, the floor is now closed. And at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty one dash sixty two. This is authorizing executive session to discuss litigation regarding four one zero one Bridge River Road LLC. And number two, the sale of municipal property two zero seven Wildflower Place. Can I get a motion for that, please?
So move, Tom Lyon. Second, Jenny.
Thank you, Councilman. Jamie, can you call the roll, please?
Sure. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Barrow?
Aye. A motion carries the resolution. As a result carries, and we will now go into executive session. So for the public who's watching, we're going to go into executive session and another Zoom meeting to address these two issues. If any action is to be taken, it will be taken back in this public room at the conclusion of our executive session. So stay with us and we'll be back shortly. I'll see everybody in the in our executive session. You good, Jamie?
Yep, we're good.
Great. Since there's no action to be taken from executive session, we're going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, to adjourn.
And a second, please.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Nobody in motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and have a great night. See you in a couple of weeks.
Have a great week.
Have a good night, guys.
See everybody.